Welcome, everybody. We'll get going on city council meeting tonight. November, what are we? November 1st, 2022? Thanks for joining us in person and thanks for everybody in TV land that's watching as well. We'll, we'll hand it over to Councilman Argyle for the invite for a prayer and motivational message. And after that, Councilwoman Beck will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Sheldon Gordon to come and have a few minutes to talk with us. Just a little background, Sheldon has been a businessman in Spanish Fork for forty-two, forty-two years. Has a couple of business in Spanish Fork. He was a councilman four or five years ago. And also was a police officer in our city, four or five, yeah. Has, has served our community for a long time. I asked him to come and take a few minutes and tell his, tell us about him and his business and his experience with the city. Thanks Sheldon for being here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the invitation. It seems like for forty-two years, I've been right down the road making a living. And it, it's gone by fast. And I put all of you on warning that time will go by fast. And don't, don't wait for the journey to end, do enjoy it. Because I look back on my life and I think that the most enjoyable time of my life has been the journey. Now I just go home and can't sleep at night, you know, have a heart attack and things like that, so.
Like, do you plan that heart attack?
I didn't plan the heart attack. It was the twenty-five thousand gallons of gas that went in the ground that gave me the heart attack. That's not where it's supposed to go. It's supposed to go in your tank. Chad asked me to say a few things, kind of left the agenda open. So I'm just gonna kind of start telling you that I've always lived by my motto in life. And that's I get up early and get your work done and be on a good golf course by noon. And I've always tried to maintain that. I haven't always been able to accomplish it. In my business, it's been, it's been enjoyable and a challenge. I've enjoyed, I remember when I was a young man coming home from the dairy farm from my dad. And he turned to me, I come from, all of you know my name, Sheldon Gordon. I've been, I've born and raised in this town. I grew up in Lake Shore. My dad was a dairy farmer. On the way home from the dairy barn one morning, he said, now you just know there's no room for you on this dairy. And I said, you do know, those are the sweetest words you've ever told me. I want nothing to do with this dairy. But it always kind of bothered me that my dad wouldn't want to include me in my business. And so as I go through my, what I'm gonna say, I want you to know that I'm kind of like, I'll do this. I'm kind of like an author who writes the ending of his book. Not that I'm at the end of my book, but at least I'll know what direction I'm going, okay? So currently, I'm married. I have, with my, it's taken me two women to get there, but I have about forty-three years of marriage. I have, between the two of us, we have nine children and nine grandchildren. And we have four convenience stores at the time. We have two in Provo. One by the stadium and one by the hospital. You've, you've heard, I'm sure, the commercial for Mike Lee, the old, the governor. He says that he doesn't always get along with Mike Lee. Well, I don't always get along with my oldest son, so I bought a couple convenience stores in Provo. So he could work there and I can work here. But he does, he does a good job. We just operate a little differently. But we also have the two convenience stores and a car wash in Spanish Fork. One on Sixth North, one on Eighth North, and a car wash on 550 North. So just a quick little note, in my forty-two years of business, I've never had to hang a help wanted sign in my window. I've been able to have people come and ask for a job, or I've been able to talk someone into coming and work for me. And, and currently, I mean, I have now grandkids of these employees that have, that work for me and they, and they do a good job. And so we just kind of always have had great employees. So I have the three boys in the business and my other son is a, is our CPA. In nineteen seventy-eight, after my mission, I was called by Jack Swenson and asked if I'd coach a baseball game, a team. So I was coaching one night and I heard this individual talking to me through the screen. At first I thought it was a parent, disgruntled parent, but found out it was the chief of police. And he asked me if I was still looking to be a police officer. I'd shown some interest as a young age. And so I told him that I was. And so a few months later, some interviews, I became a police officer. And I was a police officer in this town for five years. But after the third year and making nine hundred and thirty-three dollars a month, I knew I either had to change jobs or change my style of living. And so I looked for a business to buy. And I, I was working part-time at the convenience store down on Main, on Sixth North Saggs. And I was, had the opportunity to buy that store and so I bought it. And after a few years, I needed to catch up with the available products that were coming online. Different kinds of unleads and, and the diesel and that sort of thing. And so I, I needed to replace my tanks. So I got the guys excavating the hole and we're taking the tanks out. I've done all my permission things through the division of, you know, environmental qualities. And just out of the corner of my eye, I catch, I see Paul Larson, building inspector, driving by. And he kind of took a double take on them. What is that all about? So a minute or later, he comes around the corner and says, what are you doing? I said, well, we're changing tanks. He says, how come? And I said, well, you know, we're getting old and I want to upgrade and I want to include, you know, add some more tanks. Yeah, that was it. He, about an hour later, he comes back and he hands me a permit. And he says, here's your permit to replace those tanks. And I says, you show me your environmental qualifications. You show me you've been to one hour of remediation qualification and I'll pay that business li, or permit. And I just chucked it in the hole. And he says, you get that son of a bitch and permit out of that hole and you pay it or I'll shut you down. So after coming to some good common sense, got in my car and came to city office. And as I was walking up these steps, there was a sign that says, time to sign up for city council. And I thought, that's exactly what I'm gonna do. But before I did it, I rode up to my neighbor's house, Marie Huff, and I said, Maria, I got an idea. I'm gonna run for city council and I want you to run for mayor. She said, no, you run for mayor and I'll run for city council. And I said, no, I don't have the time. I'm coaching. I got kids. I got businesses. You got the time. You run for mayor, I'll run for city council. So we did and we won. And so in between time, I quit the city and I go to work full-time for the, for myself. And I'm on the city council. And I got one guy on one end of the council. He's school teacher. People can't get to him. I got one guy that's a pilot. He's crop dusting somewhere. I got some Thor, she's in Salt Lake. Nobody can get to her. There's me and then there's Kim Peterson. Nobody can get to him, but they can get to me. They're on my doorstep at five o'clock in the morning with, you know, there's issues, right? You're gonna make half of them happy and you're gonna make half of them unhappy. So I said to Maria, I can't, this is killing me. You know, the minute I walk in my store, I got these people all over me. So she opened up an office up here. So she took, she took the brunt of the comments and it was really helpful. She could handle the crowd. I'll tell you one experience we had. We got contacted by the state that they wanted to put in a facility for severely handicapped. And it was on Seventh East and Fourth North. And they said, look, we want them in every community. We just want to be a good neighbor. We're letting you know we're coming in. You're gonna have to change some zoning. But this is what it is. It's for severely handicapped people, you know? The people in this community will get behind it and they'll do a good job helping them and rendering some service. But we didn't see any problem with it. So then all of a sudden, some of the ecclesiastical leaders in that area and a local police officer are going door to door, telling everybody that it's going to be a sex offender location. So we had some big, we had loaded council meetings and they were mad. They were upset. So we decided to have an open meeting, public meeting at the little theater down at the high school. And you had to back up a little bit. The church owned the property, okay? There's a church there now, but at the time, the church owned that property. And they knew what it was, was going in and they, and they, they liked it, right? We had talked to the general, the area rep. So we decided to have this open meeting and let everybody come and speak their piece. And so they had assigned a few speakers and they're up speaking and your dad was there. He was sitting on one side of Marie and Marie's here and I'm on the other side. The rest of the council didn't want to go. I don't blame them.
That is not an option.
Speakers are, they are coming at us. They are so mad because this is gonna be a sex offender house. And we know better, but we can't convince them. So we've asked this general authority to come, but he's a little late. I don't know where he's at. So I turned to Marie and I says, if our guy doesn't come, we're gonna get, I feel like we're gonna be the next tarred and feathered threesome in Spanish Fork. Because that's, that was the attitude of these, my customers that I'm serving, I was serving, I don't anymore. They don't darken my door, but they're mad. I said, Maria, you gotta do something. I said, Dave, do you think you can get us out of here? And he says, no, where we're at, there's no way we can get out of here. A lot of help your dad was. So I said, Maria, you've got to do something to tame this crowd down. So she gets up, eighty-five years old, greater than I am. Calm down. I want everybody to stand up. She said, I want everybody to stand up. And I'm thinking, what in is she got going on? She said, now I want all of you to follow me in Itsy Bitsy Spider. And the crowd's like, no, we didn't come here to sing Itsy Bitsy Spider. But about the third time, she got them all to recite Itsy Bitsy Spider, went up the water pipe. And we went all through it and they kind of calmed down. And just as we were calming down, here come our, our guy. And he was representing three guys that everybody in the congregation knew their names. And he told them that, look, this is a good thing. And whatever you've been told is a bad thing. And so it was like watching a corral of sheep leave the corral. Because it was like they didn't believe it until he said it, you know, they couldn't believe a word we said. So to end my story, I got more, but I don't have time. I know where you're at and I appreciate what you're doing. City's on a good, good pace and I've been where, been where you are. And I understand some of the grief you deal with, but hang in there. You're doing a good job. Thanks for allowing me this time.
Just a real quick comment. So at Sheldon's gas station here on Main Street, he still has a, a coffee shop. I have to refer to that. Seth knows. Every time he'll ask me where I heard it, it's always at the coffee shop. But my, my wife's grandpa, Dan Evans, was getting older and he was a farmer and for all his life. And he had Parkinson's and the doctor had told him he needed to go for a little walk. And pretty soon, he'd go down to Sheldon's and that became his routine. Sheldon had a chair for him and had a chance to visit with him. And that became our goal is to get Grandpa Dan down to Sheldon's for coffee. Because Sheldon, he took good care of him in them last years of his life. Thanks Sheldon.
I, I will say one thing about your grandpa. I was on the police department and one late night call, I get called down to Danny's place. He's got a guy traveling through town. He had landed in New York. He's German. And he landed in New York and he had crisscross his way across the United States. And his plan was to buy a horse in St. George and ride it to Phoenix, sell the horse and the tack and buy airfare home. Well, it was winter. It was cold. It was like, it wasn't winter, but it was, you know, December. And Danny was really nervous. I'd never met your grandpa before. He was really nervous about this guy in a tent and a haystack right there. He thought, you know, he's gonna get cold and he's gonna set that haystack on fire. So I said, I'll go talk to him. So I, I went and, kind of hard to knock on a tent, but I got his attention and he was sound asleep. And I say, you can't stay here. So I loaded him up in the police car. And at the old ballpark, we used to have a, I don't know if you remember or not, but behind the ballpark, there was a park, fireplace and then a little orchard. So I put him up there for the night. I said, now look, in the morning, I get off at seven, I'll come pick you up and I'll take you out the freeway. So ever since then, Dan and I were good friends. Well, Danny had come in the store sometimes twice a day. Janie'd bring him down when, when he couldn't walk. I had stool for him and I knew exactly how he liked his coffee and I'd make it just perfect for him. He called me Sag and I, and I called him Danny and we began, I ended up speaking at his funeral, good friends. But he also brought in guys like Ben Roach and, and Snell Swenson. And I mean, there was a, there was fifteen good old farmers, you know? They owned the majority of the valley, you know, good time ranch, big time ranchers. And they all came in to visit with Dan. So I'd mentioned one day, I said something about a witness on Johnny Carson. Some guy, one of my customers says, so, you know, you get up early every morning. You stay up to watch Johnny Carson? And I said, well, only on Friday night. I don't open on Saturday. But I says, I don't need to stay up and watch Johnny Carson. With Reed Christmas and Danny Evans and Ben Roach. I got three of the funniest guys on earth. And those guys were, they had more humor than, than Johnny Carson, for sure. Anyway, I loved your grandpa.
Thank you, Sheldon.
Thanks Sheldon.
Thanks for that, thanks for that thought. It goes to speak of, we're always up here, I think every, every city council meeting, we're talking about business and celebrating business with the Chamber of Commerce and, and new businesses and old businesses. And Sheldon is one of those places that when people do ask us constantly, hey, I love the small town feel. Things like that, a business owner for a long, long time with the coffee shop, gas station, that keeps the small town feel. And Sheldon's a huge part of that for our community. So thank you, Councilman Argyle, for inviting him. Good work. Councilwoman Beck? Does somebody want to offer a prayer? Maybe his, maybe his nephew could offer a prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful this day for the opportunity we have to meet here in these council chamber, chambers. We're grateful for the reason that we are here and the, the business that we have to take care of and, and discuss and talk about. We pray that we'll be able to do it in a civil manner and with the best decisions being made for the whole of this great city. We're thankful for the women and men that keep us safe as they serve in our military and our first responders. Please be with them and their families at this time as they sacrifice so much so that we can be safe as well as free. We are so thankful for all those that serve our wonderful community on so many different levels. Please, please bless them and let them know that they're so needed and so, so, we're so grateful for all they do for us. We're thankful for the moisture we have and are receiving. Please bless us with a very heavy winter so that our crops might have the moisture that we need. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I invite you to stand and repeat the pledge after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item C on number, under number three. Follow-up to previous comments. Manager parents, any follow-up to comments from last meeting? Anybody have anything written down? I don't think we do either. Okay. We'll move to item D, employee of the quarter. We have somebody to present the employee of the quarter. We have a couple employees we're recognizing. Mr. Bryan?
Well, I only have one. So somebody else is gonna have to step up and take a turn when this is over. But we have, in our department, we have an employee that I don't feel like needs an awful lot of introduction. Since, almost since the beginning of SFCN, Mercedes has been with us as our department secretary. And she's kind of been the, that face of the SFCN office staff. As our customers and our employees come in, she's, she's there. She's always got a smile on her face and she greets those customers with, with respect. And she just has such a way about her that just makes people feel really comfortable. Speaking with her, getting to the bottom of problems. When we have customers that have just gotten really frustrated because they can't get something to work right. They come in and they, they really want to vent, they really want to unload. And, and they get to talk with Mercedes and when, when they talk with Mercedes, they're like, oh, well, that's so nice. Let's just do this. And, and Mercedes just has a way of really getting to the heart of what the customer's problem is and making them feel like we hear them and we understand them, which we do. And as, as our department has grown over the last fifteen, twenty years, it's become more and more complex. And there's more and more administrative things that need to happen to keep our department running smoothly. And I have relied so heavily on Mercedes and her willingness and her knowledge to just keep that department running. She just, she knows what has to happen. She knows the processes. She knows everything that makes us run and function and stay on Jordan's good side as far as the finances go. And, and she just does a fantastic job. And like all of us, there's ups and downs in life and she just, she never lets that interfere with her work. She makes sure that everything at work is done and she just, she does a fantastic job. And that's, that's all I'm gonna say, but I do want to share one direct quote with you just to kind of reiterate this point. She is one of the kindest human beings you will ever meet. Mercedes constantly renews my faith in humanity. I am convinced if there were more people in this world like her, it would be a happier, kinder planet.
Mercedes.
I just want to say it's, it's been a privilege for me to be a servant of Spanish Fork. I really don't have any family education other than my high school education. But throughout this venue, I have learned so much and I'm grateful, eternally grateful for all of the opportunities that this job has given me. So I'm very thankful for the acknowledgement. Thank you.
I can back up everything that Brian said about Mercedes. Every dealing I've had with her, she's great, so. I'm here tonight, so for those of you guys who might not know me, I'm the Parks Maintenance Supervisor, Taylor Banks. I'm here to recognize one of my employees, which I'm gonna have him come up because he's all the way in the back. Brandon Clower. So this past summer, we've had some restructuring in the Parks Department. Brandon, Brandon was part of the buildings and grounds. a lead worker position in the Parks Department and he was tasked with overseeing many properties here in the downtown area. When Brandon took over his lead, he did so with no complaints and always maintained a positive attitude. He has taken the steps to, sorry, my notes disappeared on me. He's had a positive attitude and he's taken the steps to make his properties his own. The City Park, this, this building, the Justice Center, I mean, he, all credits due to him this year because they've, they've looked fantastic and I couldn't say more good things about the way they've looked. When he was given the new responsibilities, when he made the transition into the Parks Division, it was unknown to me how Brandon would initially perform, having us coming from two different divisions. I haven't truly worked directly with him in, in other ways. But through his transition, I found I wasn't needed to kind of be along with him. He took on many of the tasks and he did a great job of doing them in a duly manner that, that was really surprising to me. And so he proved himself to me and the Parks Department and he shows to me that he has the skills to continue to beautify our beautiful city and take care of our, our properties. And he's a great value and a great employee of Spanish Fork City, so.
I don't know what to say. Thanks.
Good job.
Dale, that was a lot nicer than Bill Bushman's introduction. Last Parks and Rec, good job Brandon.
We doing a picture?
We are.
Okay, picture time.
So close.
Thank you guys. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for departments recognizing key employees and thank you to these, these employees, well deserved recognition. And again, when people ask us, outside of Spanish Fork, how we're doing it in Spanish Fork, it's pretty easy as an elected official to say, well, it's the people and it's the people that work for our city and it's the people inside of our city, the citizens, that make up the community. So fun stuff to recognize, good people doing good things like that, so.
Okay, that moves us on to item number four, public comments. Anybody from the public that would like to address, address the mayor and council generally or specifically about anything? Yes. Let's go back here and then we'll come, we'll come up to you here. State your name for Tara to get in the minutes.
My name's Emily Peterson. It was interesting to note that when the referendum was put on the agenda, we were only given five minutes, but you know, other people get to go on for 15 minutes or so. When I came to the last city council meeting, I was expecting to hear the referendum had been defeated and maybe a little gloating, but I was not expecting Brandon Gordon to use a tragic event to down some the grave of the referendum. It was disgusting to hear him interweave condolences and then dig at the referendum sponsors. He says, we go from laughing, being called sleazy online, to honoring a true Spanish Fork volunteer, as if we aren't. He goes on, I'm not, I won't use her name. She was forgotten more about, she has forgotten more about how to love and serve others in this town than the keyboard warriors will ever know. It continues to devolve from there. In kindergarten, we were taught to ignore those who called us names. We don't do that here, we listen. Where was, where's listening from the 2015 vote? He continues, if we are looking for the boogeyman perhaps, start with some advice from Gandhi. If you want to change the world, start with yourself. When we wonder why politics devolve, why things get nasty and it's blamed more on the constituents and the people who might need to take responsibility for the things they say. Mayor Brandon Hall at that meeting said that it was a legal and transparent process and all citizens, all citizens are allowed to do something like that. Along the way, we are given pretty much every document at the last minute. I remember for our packet, we were given a 458 on the day it was due. We were further misaligned and said that there was a dispersion made about things being hidden. Well, things can get confusing for people when you're given an email from Von Picknell on August 11th at 4:01 that says, for inclusion on the November 2022 general election ballot. Things can get confusing. We needed.
Don't worry about the time Emily, take as much time as you need. Like, like, like we had a gas station owner, a business owner in here for 40 something years, take as much time as you need. Don't worry about the time running out. Go ahead.
Great. We needed 2,187 signatures from registered voters. We had to make sure that those signatures were distributed between, I think, four different voting districts. I guess we had 570 signatures as we were never actually given a number. You guys sent out a survey to 7,992 residents regardless of if they were registered voters and you only received 20% back, an even smaller amount even mentioned or exonerated, whether good or bad. And that's what you based your decision on. So, moving on, what is the backup plan if the, if the RAP tax is not renewed? Spending is slow as inflation has increased, so how will that affect your sales tax revenue? What is the backup plan for property tax revenue if homes go down in value as they have started to? The Fed, the Fed plans to continue increasing rates to 4.4% by the end of this year. What will that do to the housing market when mortgage rates are in the eight to nine percent What effect will that have on your impact fee revenue unless people are building? Does revenue from other resources include a donation from the Nevo School District? Have you guys already locked in a bond rate? From what I understand, rates have changed since the time you announced it to where they are now. Many news sources say that this is a terrible time to be getting into bonds. Forbes even said, is this the worst year ever for bonds? We're in a recession. How is all of this going to affect the pocketbooks of citizens here? Will businesses close? They often do in a recession. Oops, there goes some more sales tax revenue. Is there a price on this rec center that you guys are willing to not exceed or are pocketbooks just an open source? A question was asked that night, if you continue raising our property taxes to pay for the rec center. Shane Marshall, Marshall said at that Truth and Taxation meeting, we don't have that, that's not a plan of ours right now. We have the funding in place to make the bond payment. We really haven't been given that much information on what you guys are building, how that's going to look, what exactly is going to be included in it. I've heard a lot of different stories. So I think we all deserve and need a lot more information about the rec center. We need more transparency on that and people ought to deserve to know, but we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you Emily. I don't know if Emily, if you want answers to the questions or if those are just hypothetical questions. So a lot of those questions are rhetorical from what answers were given at the last meeting. Like the exact signatures were given by our city recorder, an official position. Those had to be counted by the county. It was an official position. There's a lot of other things in there that questions can be answered if you'd like. I don't know that, that, you know, we're going to have them all on hand here, but if you'd like to meet with any of us after a meeting or prior to a meeting or anytime that you want to schedule, the mayor's office is open for myself, all of these council members use it as well to meet with constituents on a weekly basis. You're welcome to come up and ask those questions anytime if you, if you do really want the answers. I don't know if you, do you, do you want to try to answer some of those now?
I don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on it, but I think, I think one of the questions that, that she's asked, she's asked a couple of times or at least alluded to in a couple of meetings and so I think it might be worth pointing out some of the direction on the election timing.
Sure, that's a good one.
So I'm happy to address that.
Do you want to wait, do you want to see if there's any other questions from the public? Any, any other, we did have a public, yes, we had another gentleman that raised his hand for public comment. Not that you're the last, somebody else can do public comment too, but we'll, we'll wait after to answer some questions. Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of a, kind of a tough act to follow, isn't it? Andrew Kelly, and thank you for your leadership, Mayor. This, I don't mind, but it is a little offensive, this timer thing, that it doesn't apply to anybody except the public comments. That's, I get it, I get it, you don't want to be here all night and I appreciate your I did enjoy today taking my tomato plants to the transfer station with my certificate. That was wonderful and easy.
Used, good.
It's the first time I've used that. But what I wanted to talk about tonight was, is one of the jewels of the city, which is right behind us, where, where this building is on it, which is Main Street. And I hope this, that this spring and summer, I'm sure you did, because I'm sure you were part of it, each of you, but I hope you got a chance to walk Main Street and enjoy the beautiful flower boxes that are on both sides of Main Street. Weren't they amazing? My wife and I spent several evenings and she would explain to me all, you know, the different plants and how amazed that she was that there was no dead ones, how well they're maintained. And that's what I wanted to talk about. I want, it's been touched on tonight. We touched on the, the gentleman from the Parks Department. I mean, my goodness, how amazing is this park over here? It's like 100 degrees all summer and night grass is still perfect. It's amazing to me. But, and I, and I'm not really talking to, to, to you guys as much as I am outside the city, because everything the city does is, is pretty top-notch in my opinion. But there's things that are, you know, that are, that could be more beautiful. That's what I'm getting at. And as I walk Main Street in the evenings, I'm a little sad that it's just me and my wife walking on Main Street and there's no cafes open, there's no, if I was king, I would spend the $60 million on redeveloping Main Street, but hopefully that'll, that'll come at some point. But I want to challenge this body and Mayor, one of the, another jewel of our city, which you, which you know very, very well, is an elderly gentleman on the planning commission who's very focused on this too. And I feel Kevin, I'm sure is not, and I'm sure, I shouldn't say it this way. If you're not, I would like you guys to pay more attention to what's going on there because they really focus on that, on things beautifying buildings, other aspects of the city that I'm sure you're not glossing over. I understand you love the city just as much as, as, as they do. But your father is amazing. He has such a wealth of knowledge, such an understanding of what is good and what is, and there's things that I've seen, that I've watched him have extensive comments on and they kind of get glossed over here a little bit. Maybe, I only say that because you won't remember anything else I say, but you will remember that. And I would love for you to make it that he's never off the, the planning commission. And if he is, put him in charge of beautifying the city. But if I could say, you know, things that, when I walk Main Street and that gentleman is, is gone and this is not directed at him. But when I walk Main Street and I see a, I see a gas station on Main Street, 7-Eleven, like it's brand new, which I was not opposed to that at all, but then I was like, this is our Main Street, you know? Think of Park City's Main Street. Can you imagine a 7-Eleven right next to restaurants? I like the previous mayor that, that, you know, opined for a great steakhouse in the city. I want to take date night, more date nights in Spanish Fork than Provo. That's my challenge to you. This is the home of SFCN. The lady that, I mean, the only interaction I've ever had with SFCN, I had, I had a very, very rare problem. And let me tell you how amazing their customer, I don't know if I talked with her, they were so great that I felt guilty calling and said, upgrade my service, I want to pay more. And they did everything to try to talk me out of it. I said, no, your service is so good, I want to pay more. I'm really, really thankful. So the city has, you know, infrastructure wise, it's world-class. But let's raise our, that's what I'm saying, raise our sights a little bit on the beauty of structures. Think of what the next Kmart is going to be, which we don't want, derelict building. I'll tell you what it's going to be. The Walmart, the Hobby Lobby, the Lowe's, they're going to become derelict because they're just sheds with signs. I frequent all of them, maybe not Hobby Lobby, but I have nothing against them. They're vital, but they're not very attractive buildings. Let's hide them, let's do better landscaping, let's, you know. If I, if, if I come to the city and ask for a permit to build something that looked like the Hobby Lobby, it would be denied immediately, right? My house. They'll go, whoa, 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 no, 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 that's too, and I know it's going to sound bad to those businesses, I'm, I'm all for those businesses, but let's, you know, the first part of our motto in the city, I'm not a big fan of that word, but let's, let's just strive a little more and especially the jewel that's right here. You know, the historic buildings and things we have there, some of them need to go, but we got, let's not waste what we, what we have here. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. Seth, you got a couple?
Yeah, thank you. We have a lot of work ahead of us with Main Street and, and of course, that's not our road and that's something we'll work with UDOT on. We've actually got a three or four phase project that's going to take a decade, but we'll be, it's absolutely in the works and, and great things are coming, but we have to work with UDOT on that. I wanted to just touch on one thing that Emily's commented on in her comments today. Now pull up the PDF. So when we do a referendum process, and maybe this is education for everybody, but when we go through a referendum process, we don't know what is going to happen, we don't know that we'll have a referendum and so we are reactionary. And so we received this referendum and I don't know if, if anybody read this, but if we highlight the third paragraph here, the referendum actually requested to be on the ballot in November of 2023. This is not our language, this was not our referendum, this was something that was given to us, of course, by the sponsors of the referendum. When we go through then the referendum process, state law gives us a time, an X number of days to do a lot of different things. Some of those, excuse me, some of those, let's distill it down to maybe the finest point, that we have about 20 days to do a bunch of background work. we'll be, it's absolutely in the works, and, and great things are coming, but we have to work with UDOT on that. Um, I wanted to just touch on one thing that Emily's, uh, commented on, um, in her comments today. Now, pull up the PDF. So, when we do a referendum process, and maybe this is education for everybody, but when we go through a referendum process, uh, we don't know what is going to happen, we don't know that we'll have a referendum, and so we are reactionary. And so, we received this referendum, and I don't know if, if anybody read this, um, but if, if we highlight the third paragraph here, the referendum actually requested to be on the ballot in November of 2023. This is not our language, this was not our referendum, this was something that was given to us, of course, by the sponsors of the referendum. When we go through, then, the referendum process, state law gives us a time, an X-number of days to do a lot of different things. Some of those, excuse me, some of those, let's distill it down to maybe the finest point, that we have about 20 days to do a bunch of background work. But inside of that 20 days, and I may get some of this wrong, Tara and Vaughn are somewhat more expert in this than I am, but we have about 20 days to do all of this stuff. But inside of that 20 days, we have five days to do this, and then after those five days, three days to do this, and after those, we have, whatever, however it adds up. At day 15, we have to turn in a, a statement to, um, we have to swap statements, I guess is the best way to describe it. And the, the sponsors of the referendum have the opportunity to provide some kind of a statement, whatever that might be, and the city, a referendum is always against something that the city has done, and so the city is always one party to the referendum. And we, we have to send them a statement, and then they get five days to review that and, and retool their statement, and we have five days to review theirs and retool ours. And so, she makes that comment of, everything was done on the last day. Well, there are timelines that we have to hit, and if we hit the timeline faster than, than another, than the, the shot clock starts for the next thing, and we have to keep our eye on the full 20-day window, because there are things that we have to do. And if we do it out of line, then we become non-compliant with the referendum. And so, I think you said this, Mayor, uh, it's very important that we understand, referendums are very legal processes. So, yeah, a lot of the things that were turned in, were always turned in on the last moments, because we wanted to make sure that we got everything right. Inside of that 20-day window, I instructed Vaughn to research, can this be on the 22 ballot or not? And so, I'll use my hands kind of as a, a guardrail, uh, that I need to know all of the parameters, you need to know all of the parameters. And so, I, so I have Vaughn researching, um, I have Tara researching, I'm researching, et cetera, the county is researching. And we're, we're studying the, and this side of it, we're studying that side of it, and we're, we're making sure that we understand everything. One of the things that I asked Vaughn to do was, if this could be on the 22 ballot, what would it need to, what would we need to do? And so, he prepared the language in case it could be. There were a number of factors, including in, in the decision or the need for it to be on the 2023 ballot. First and foremost, of course, was this request, which again came from the ballot sponsors, or the referendum sponsor. All right, go back to the other page for a moment. Within that 20-day window period, if you click on the referendum packet, this packet is something that is put together by state law. I believe the order of the pages are given to us by state law. And so, we have to put this on page one, and then this next, and that next. It ends up being a whatever, you know, however many page-long packet, but the, the length and the order is given to us by, by state code. Well, at some point in this 20-day window, of course, we sent them, uh, the argument by Spanish Fork City. So, if you jump to pages 13 and 14. On pages 13 and 14 is a two-page, really a, a page and a half, argument that the city has to send to the sponsors. When we put this together, it's a one-and-a-half-page document. It's not a 13-page document, right? This is a standalone document. I actually asked Tara and Vaughn if they would please put this information standalone on the website. I want this as a, you can click right here and see this alone, and that, and that component, not as one long document, because it's page 15 or whatever. I want to read this, I'd have to wade through to get to page 15, I want a quicker link. And they studied, could we do that? And the answer was, no. We don't have the luxury of ordering this however we want. It has to be in this order. So, it is what it is. So, scroll down to the next page. Right here, we have a paragraph in that argument that says, "What is the timeline?" This document was emailed out to the sponsors of the referendum before the, the window of time started for them to, uh, to collect signatures. And right here, it, again, answers the question, "What is the timeline specifically?", and says, "The vote would not be until 2023." And so, I totally understand, and it was at my request, and so, this absolutely was at my request, that Vaughn study, can it be on the 22 ballot? And to get it ready that if it can be, that it can be, because there's a very legal process that anything has to follow to be on the ballot. We have to have numbers, we have to have titles, we have to have all this different language. And if we miss those things, then again, we're to blame, and it's our fault. We never want to be that, that fault, right? And, but at some point, it was decided that it can't be on the ballot, and so, although the work was done, here again says, it will be on the 2023 ballot. It's unfortunate that that was missed, it's unfortunate that was misunderstood by anybody through this process. It was in two places in this pro, uh, packet of information. I, I don't know what else to do there. I totally understand the concerns, or at least the arguments expressed by, uh, by Emily, I'm sympathetic to the concerns that she's expressed, uh, but, under, knowing the whole totality of things, we, we did everything that we could to understand the details, the decisions were made, and the information was put out very specifically, very clearly, from the beginning of that signature gathering process. There you go.
Thank you. I'm glad you're sympathetic. I'm not sympathetic, I'm not sympathetic for, if, if, again, a legal and transparent and public process, and if you don't read the packet before you hand out a packet for a referendum, it's not the city's fault, it's not my fault, it's not anybody's fault up here. That is a legal, public, transparent process. This turned into a political process. It seems some people want to make it more political than it is. I get it. Oh, I want to make it political? Emily, I get it, you, you're not a fan of Councilman Gordon becoming Commissioner Gordon. That's a political process. He got votes, and that's where he's going to go. And the people up here got thousands of votes to represent Spanish Fork City. We're fine to stack those votes up against every two years to be elected or re-elected, or anybody in this room or listening to my voice to put your name in the hat and run. It takes more than conjecture, it takes more than hearsay. It takes a public, transparent process to take a position on items. That's what it does, and I'm super proud of every single one of these people that have done that, have done that the last few years. Hopefully, they do it for years to come, and I hope the public does that for years to come, because Sheldon Gordon, just like he talked about, did that 40 years ago, and he said he's a better man for it. So, do it. It's a political process, and it's a legal, this was a legal and public and transparent process. So, again, I repeat, like I did a council meeting ago, um, dispersions of the city. We're just showing you the facts of, 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 of being incorrect. Uh, so, so the citizens should know, that's how the city operates. Imperfect people, for sure, up here. You know, if you want to talk to me privately about mistakes that I've, I've ever made as a mayor, or, or as a councilperson for eight years before that, we can go through them. I, I got a, I got a good list I'm keeping, and, and we can go through them, and it's okay to make mistakes, it certainly is, uh, and, and any elected official, uh, will, will do that, um, and I'll own up to them, I know these people own up to them too, but what we're trying to do is the best we can for the citizens that we represent while we're here for a period of time. And so, we are doing that, and that was done throughout that process too. I don't think there were any more, uh, public comments that anybody wanted to come up, so that'll take us to council comments. I think I started with you last time, did I? We'll go over here. We'll start with Councilman Argyle, come down the lane here. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to make a quick, uh, um, Rotary, so their platform, one of their platforms, Rotary, and this is the national platform, is their goal is to do away with polio. And they have made great strides with polio. Polio is a vaccine that, if taken, wipes out this disease completely. In the last few years, there's been a resurgence of polio, they've had a few cases back east, and, um, so they've reemphasized their efforts to, uh, here in America, um, third-world countries were some of the places that we were taking the vaccine and having, uh, workshops and things to get people vaccinated to, for this horrible disease. But right now, they're in a, their campaign to, uh, take donations and continue to fund this, because polio has not gone away, um, uh, and is starting to come back, because people are not getting this vacu, vaccination. But anyway, just wanted you to know that the Rotary, the National Rotary, this is one of their, this is their platform, and it's an important platform. If you can imagine, I don't know, probably very few of us in this remember those, those days. I remember my mom talking about it, uh, when it was here in this city, and there were people in the city who got polio, there was people who died from it. We don't want to have a resurgence of that and have a disease that we have a cure for to be wiped out, but just letting you know that if you have the opportunity, we would like the opportunity to contact a Rotarian and, and donate a little bit of that, because they do some great things towards getting rid of this disease permanently. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Councilman Gordon?
Hey, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Argyle for inviting Uncle Sheldon to, to speak tonight. I didn't know that until this afternoon, and was grateful for it. I'm, I am, uh, very proud of the family I come from, and my, my uncles and my heritage, they're, they're great people. So, thank you, Chad, for inviting him. And Mayor, just, uh, would publicly apologize if I did offend you or your family by, uh, my comments in the last meeting. I don't think so, because I know we've talked since, but I would just make sure I publicly, uh, express that to you and your family.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Gordon. Councilwoman Beck.
Thank you for the public comments. Hopefully, Emily, we can address your questions over time. There's some of those things we do not have answers to, because we're working on it, we had to get through the referendum process, so we could move forward. So, I understand there's, there's questions a lot of people want answers to, and quite frankly, we don't have all the answers, but we're, we're working towards them, and we'll be as transparent as we can moving forward, either announcing something here, or definitely keeping up on the website. And I love your Main Street comment, we are working on it, but we, we definitely can put a little bit more teeth into that. Um, you'll see some big changes coming up in the next couple of years. And one thing I was most shocked about when I, um, became, well, sat up here on City Council is government's speed. It's slower than anything I've ever seen. So, I mean, and that's not to our government, it's to everything. There's so many processes and money and budget, and, and UDOT owns Main Street, Spanish Fork doesn't, but we, we revitalized a lot of the downtown businesses over, over the last hmm, seven to eight years, Dave. A lot of money has been invested, and, and it's just, it's just a slow-moving well, but thank you for the reminder. And I just have six other things, real fast.
Yes, six is good.
Okay, so, number one, and most, most of them come with photos. So, the Annual Chamber of Commerce South Valley Business Summit was up at the Oaks, and this day is where my work world at Utah Valley Magazine collided with my, um, city council world, and my boss spoke at this summit, and Mayor Mendenhall spoke, and it was a really great day to just get motivated, businesses connecting over lunch. We, we were up there for about six hours. Topics included how to connect with customers, how to have, how positive people get things done, and it's just, we have a really great, vibrant business community, community, many of them Main Street business owners, and so, the chamber is a great connector. I appreciate them. Um, I'm on the library board, and last week for our library board meeting, before our meeting, we had the director take us through new library hall across this, just right over here, and, um, we toured that, so I have a couple of photos. We are wrapping up, it seems like it will be ready, well, the building will be ready, probably the end of January, get things in order. The library across the street will be closed down, most likely the month of March, to get things moved, and we are hoping, hoping to be open in April. Here are a couple of the library board members, where, um, they will, in the future, be paying their finance bills. The finance offices will also take up a portion. So, there they are at the window. This picture is from the children's area, which is going to be super fun. The shapes and colors are starting to come in, and, and Scott's describing there where everything's going to go. So, right there in the middle will be where all of the library stacks are on the shelves. And then, the last photo is, go back one, is, maybe? Yeah, that's my new seat. That's going to be council chambers, so it's a little messy right now. So, this will be a much bigger room, so when we do have a, a big crowd, everyone can fit inside of the council chambers.
Shotgun, there's the door.
Oh, yeah, there's a door. The door in the back, it's an escape room. If we need to escape, we'll get out the back door, so. Just kidding, no, we're not announcing now, Chad. Okay, and then the next thing, um, Miss Spanish Fork teamed up with IHC for its first annuals, annual girls' night, and they had 500 swag bags ready, and I was one of the last people to get a swag bag, and I got there when it started. So, about 45 minutes before this event started, women were lined up around the building. It was a very successful event. Um, IHC told Miss Spanish Fork, "If you can get 500 people there this year, we would love to make it an annual event." And this event had Rebecca Kressman, she's a Spanish Fork resident, breast cancer survivor, and host of FM 100, down there as our DJ, and it was just a really great opportunity for women to get together, connect. Um, there were a lot of prizes, food, but just really encouraging women to take initiative of their health. So, congratulations to Grace, our Miss Spanish Fork, for putting so much of her own time and talents and energy into making that happen. The next one is the Utah Valley Girls Prosperity Summit, where Mayor Mendenhall spoke. I was trying to multitask, I didn't go over there, but Mayor, there you are.
Hey.
Lecturing all of the community. You did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
You did a great job. It was really cool. Um, a lot of the mayors said if they could spend, if they were given money, what would they spend their money on? And a lot of them said their parks, and I loved how our mayor could say, like, "Our parks is one of our crowning jewels, especially the, the new All Abilities Park." But our Parks and Rec Department takes such great care of our parks. We're so lucky to have those type of amenities here, when other cities are only dreaming to have something so great. So, thank you, Mayor Mendenhall, for being so involved over there. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for the trick-or-treat on Main Street on Saturday. There's Kathleen with the chamber, she was down there. We had our police and fire down there giving out candy, our Parks and Rec, Miss Spanish Fork and her royalty. Have you heard how many they think they had?
I haven't heard them turn out yet, no.
Okay.
It was full.
A plethora of people. It was fun, it was a good event, and, and that's one of the many events that gathers our community to downtown Main Street, to our businesses, but also creates that small-town feel. So, I love that. And then, the last thing, there's no picture, but last week, Mayor, Councilman Marshall and I, along with staff, were able to meet with Senator McKell and Representative White and, um, Burton, and we meet regularly throughout the year to create relationships, so they know what Spanish Fork is doing, so they don't hear things when they're in session or meeting with people throughout Utah saying, "We need to control, you know, cities and what they're doing." We're trying to let them know, we're in control, we're doing our best to, um, manage our growth, and it's just a really good opportunity. So, thank you, staff, for creating those type of environments where we can meet with those important people making decisions for our state, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Thanks for all the things you attend throughout the weeks in between us not meeting. You're pretty active on your meetings.
So, I just heard that we don't have to go to everything.
No, you still have to go to everything. Yep, that's, that's not an option.
That was shocking.
It's not an option. Councilwoman Marshall?
Thanks, Mayor. First thing, it's that time of year again, hopefully everyone has their packets in the mail, please vote. It's very, very important. None of us are up this year, but in a couple of years, we will be, and I think you can hear from the discussion we had today, and over the course of the last few months, the importance in voting people that will represent your views onto this council. Personally, from my perspective, if I'm not representing the views of the majority of Spanish Fork residents, get me out of here. I'm totally fine with that. I ran on a platform, I was asked questions, I answered those questions. I believe that the majority, that the people that voted for me wanted me to behave that way, and that's the way I'm doing it. If that is not the sentiment of the county, of the city, I'm fine not to be up here, but I'm trying to represent those that voted for me in the way that I believe they want me to, to represent them. So, um, two years from now, get out, run, um, answer the hard questions, stand up on stage with the rest of us, and, and express your opinions. We all would appreciate it. Last month, last week, la, la, the last city council, we talked about, it has been a month now, I guess, an intersection up on Center Street. Where are we at with the resolution to that, that problem? up on Center Street. Where are we at with the resolution to that problem? Chris, jump over it.
In six months, so have a microphone.
So, we reached out to the resident who had reported that problem. We invited him to our traffic safety committee meeting. And in that meeting, we went over a lot of the different aspects of the intersection. We were able to hear a lot of suggestions from the resident, one of which we implemented immediately, and that was to restrict some parking on the north side of the intersection there, right in front of the school and then across the street to keep the parking off the corner. We thought that was a really good solution. The next one that we felt like we could look at was a possible Hawk-type crossing mid-block. And so, one of the thoughts that we had is, is let's meet with the UDOT folks who evaluate those type of crossings and bring in our traffic consultant and see what kind of warrants it might meet for that. And so, that was assigned to the traffic engineer to get that done for our next meeting. One suggestion, to close Ninth East was discussed a little bit, but we felt like that was, it's not the right time.
Like close North-South?
Yeah, North-South. We felt like that was probably not viable, at least not now. And so, that was kind of discussed and put on the shelf, but other than that, we're just kind of waiting to see what the study says.
So, why UDOT? Just to get some input on?
So, we have a long-term plan, master plan for all the streets in Spanish Fork. One of those plans involves an interchange at Center Street and I-15. And we feel like that would be a good trigger for a swap, if you will, of Canyon Road with Center Street. We feel like Center Street would be five lanes connecting a major arterial in US 6 to, you know, a freeway system in I-15. Makes all the sense in the world for UDOT to have that connection between their major roads. Canyon Road and 100 South are a little bit disconnected. They're narrow in several spots, and they also make up our oversized low truck route through the city. And so, it solves that issue and does a lot of things. That's not a done deal. We've been talking openly with UDOT about that for like three, four years now, and we've, and it's in the master plan actually, is a proposed jurisdictional switch. And so, one of the thoughts we had is we didn't want to spend a significant amount of money on a Hawk-type crossing. If it didn't meet UDOT warrants, and then have them pull it out.
Okay, fair. So, what's the timing? I missed that part.
We meet once a month, and so next month, we'll have the report from the traffic engineer on the Hawk, and the parking restrictions should be done in the next week or so.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
We're going to be in Diamond, some of us speaking to Diamond Fork Junior High or Middle School in a week with Mr. Evans' class.
That's all Kevin.
Well, Kevin is going to get cornered by Mr., what's his name that's the traffic?
Evan.
Well, Mr. Evans, but I thought it was.
Eric.
Well, mister that was here that does the.
That's him.
No, it's a different guy.
Different guy, I think different guy. Mr. Evans has done it before too, but yes, he's going to get cornered.
You have a plan to tell?
I'm going to say call you guys, right? That's my answer.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that.
You bet.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Marshall. Councilman Oiler?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know about the rest of you, but when I turn on the light switch at home, I sometimes take for granted that the lights actually come on. And about a week, week and a half ago, power went out at our house. My seven-year-old was in the basement by himself, came running upstairs screaming. And I texted, texted the rest of the council to ask if any of them were having the same issue. Our city manager Seth reached out to me, asked what the situation was, what was going on. The lights went out, they came back on, they were dimmed, and only half of our light bulbs were actually working, so it was kind of a little strange. Seth did a little research, got ahold of some people in our power and light division, and let me know that they were working on it. And within 30 to 40 minutes, lights were restored, everything came back on. So, I just wanted to give a kudos to our employees in our power and light division to have that issue figured out and resolved in under an hour. I thought was pretty amazing, pretty impressive. So, thank you to those employees. Kathleen Levitt took off, but she gave me a few notes that she wanted to share from the Spanish Fork Chamber of Commerce. November 26th, 26th at 7:00 PM will be our Winter Lights Parade on Main Street. Signups are open. This is open for all businesses and residents who wish to participate. We're happy to help brainstorm, float ideas. If people want to participate but need help, signups are online at SpanishForkChamber.com. So, that is November 26th. The November Business of the Month is Mathnasium, and their celebration will be on Thursday, November 10th at 10, 2:00 PM. And then Kathleen wanted to thank Spanish Fork residents and businesses for a wonderful trick-or-treat on Main. And Stacy shared some of the images. There was an awesome, great turnout. I took my kids down and they loved it. Two hours of walking up and down Main Street was a lot of fun. But thank you to everybody that participated in that and all the residents that brought your kids out. It was great. Also, she says, thank you for everyone that came out to represent Spanish Fork during the Mike Lee visit this last month. Senator Lee came about a week or so ago, met with some of the business owners here in town and shared a message with them. Kathleen says she is very proud of the forum that collected there to represent our awesome city. And then, final thing from her was the scarecrows on Main Street. If you drive up and down Main, you'll notice some of the businesses have scarecrows out in front. They have a contest and award winners, and those winners have been decided. And she says that will be announced this week on their website, the chamber website, and through social media. So, keep an eye out for that. And then just echoing what Stacy said with the South Valley Business Summit that the chamber put on and that Mayor spoke at, that was a great event to attend, learned quite a bit from those that spoke, and then also had the opportunity to attend the Utah Valley Growth and Prosperity Summit, which was held at UVU. They did a great job hosting and also a lot of great discussion that was talked about there with the amount of growth that we're seeing in specifically Utah County, how to handle the transit, how to handle homes and roads and everything else that we're seeing with that growth. And it was talked about earlier, mentioned earlier, what do we do in a downturn, you know, with the rec center and funding that if there is a downturn and things decline. And if we look back at the last major downturn, which was, I would say, between 2008 and 2010, keep in mind that even during that downturn, Spanish Fork City still grew. We didn't grow at the pace that we typically do, but the city still had new homes that were built and new businesses that came into town during that time period. So, keep that in mind. Then, final thing from me yesterday, being Halloween, I had the opportunity to have lunch with some pretty amazing people down at the Spanish Fork Senior Center. And if you're not, if you're of senior age and you're not attending the Senior Center, I'm going to put another plug in, that is not me, I wish that was my costume, that's a great one, going to put another plug in. They know how to have a lot of fun down at our Senior Center. So, I invite you and encourage you to please come and come and join them. Lot of great activities and great food that gets prepared down there. So, some of the fun Halloween costumes just goes to show that you're never too old to have fun and dress up for Halloween. So, that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Oiler. Good work down there at the Senior Center. Yeah, a couple echoing, a couple of things already mentioned, the power, your lights coming on. We're all thankful for that, especially as we get into, get into a time where we rely quite a bit on the gas being on and power being on at our houses as the weather changes. Sure appreciate the reliability that we have here in Spanish Fork, the hard work that our local crews do, but the good work of being part of a larger power organization is, had the opportunity to travel a couple hours with that, with my old man that you mentioned, a wealth of knowledge. And I figured that life is pretty short when you look at it, and to try to get as much knowledge out of that man as I can. So, we took the scenic drive back and forth down to just south of Orangeville. Councilman Argyle knows where that's at. He's taken that truck route before many times. But the Hunter Power Plant is a coal-fired power plant down in central Utah, and is an organization that we're a part of, UNPA, with a bunch of our power mix of where we get our electricity from. So, when that, when that switch gets turned on, your lights get turned on. A part of that power mix is from the Hunter Power Plant. Right now, they have three large generators that are coal-fired, and we're part owner in one of those generators. That generator is currently down for maintenance, and so it's, if, I know we got some county people that are in the audience now that are probably pretty big geeks about this stuff, but basically, a big generator being torn apart and seeing the inside workings of a generator and the windings being redone is a huge undertaking. And these are generators that you could walk in, they're that big. They didn't want us to take a lot of pictures. It's pretty, it's pretty sensitive stuff, if you will. So, they told us, hey, let's keep your phones in your pockets and stuff, and you can see this stuff. But good tour of that plant. Spanish Fork, again, is, we're lucky to have a mix of the power that we buy off the grid and we are part of the generation of. Last council meeting, we gave away awards for a couple of businesses that are 100% renewable, buying their power from us. And so, it's a mix of coal, natural gas, hydroelectric, and wind and solar that make up our power mix. And I appreciated the other mayors and council members from the member cities joining us on that field trip down to the Hunter Power Plant. Senator Lee, Councilman Oiler touched on this, Senator Lee visited Spanish Fork. We were in a meeting with him, impressed by him and his knowledge of Spanish Fork and letting us know he feels a kinship to our city and feels like we're on the right track in a lot of different arenas. So, it was good to meet with Senator Lee in our hometown last week as well. The Dons, I'd be remiss if we didn't talk about the Dons and them going into the state playoffs. They fell short by a touchdown, right?
Forty-nine, forty-two.
Or blaming that on the down and distance guy?
Scoreboard guy.
Scoreboard guy?
Yeah.
Scoreboard guy might have had something to do with that. But no, great season to the coach and the players that go out there and put it on the field for all the schools that are in Spanish Fork boundaries. But the Dons went the furthest in the football season this year, and we appreciate all their effort. It was fun, fun watching them throughout the season. The Utah Valley Growth and Prosperity Summit, Councilwoman Beck and Councilman Oiler brought this up. I can tell you, it's an honor to sit with other mayors and communicate with them. We do that regularly in Mountainland Association of Government meetings and other forums. But it struck me as I was on there, because the Growth and Prosperity Summit, you know, you're going to be talking about growth, and that's on the minds of us, that's on the minds of our residents all the time. If you look back in the minutes of these meetings, it was the same thing that was on the minds when Councilman Sheldon Gordon was a councilman. Growth was on their mind too. So, it's always something that we're trying to make sure is done in a thoughtful and well-planned way. But as I sat on that forum with the mayor of Eagle Mountain and the mayor of Lehigh and the mayor of Linden and myself, if you think, if you think we're experiencing some growth, talk to a few of those cities. Eagle Mountain has exploded in growth, Lehigh as well. And those mayors are doing a good job in trying to do it in a planned and effective way. But when they're talking about the numbers that they've experienced in the last few years as far as residential units and density of projects and things, it was interesting to just be in that arena and see that we were on, we were on the low end of that discussion, not the high end of that discussion. So, again, it's our job, and I know it's all of our mission to try to keep that, that small-town feel that we're trying to grow and protect in Spanish Fork as we continue to grow in numbers. Real quick, I asked Nick to maybe bring up the website real quick. Some of the questions that were just asked a minute ago by Emily, and I just, the resource that the website is, if you, where's your pretty face, Nick? Do you have to scroll down to, for you to pop up?
Close it.
Oh, you closed it. Don't close that. I mean, there's a chat button all the time on the page anyway, that Nick's face pops up and says, do you want to chat, ask a question? You can do that anytime if you can't find answers to questions here on the city website. But one of the questions I don't think Seth got to was if you scroll down here, how many?
There you go.
Oh, there you are, see? Hi there, friendly face. Hi there, have a question? Text us here. Text the city about anything you need. It'll get to the right department, and you'll find that somebody from the department of the question you're asking will get back to you. And I don't know if we have a timeline of, we try to get back within minutes, I know. It's typically that, right?
Yes.
We've seen emails of people, residents, that want to email us and report of how quick they got an answer to their question, just via text on that, on that website. So, feel free to do that. If you scroll to the bottom here, it's brought up how many signatures on the referendum. If you just click that, I know Tara said it in our last meeting here, but if you go to the paragraph, 566 signatures. So, there's your answer, how many signatures were collected? 566. The county, according to the voters that are registered voters and active voters, the amount needed was 2,087 on this initiative. There was 566. That, three of the four voting districts is not anything that we're over. That's election law. If you want to change election law, again, you can petition the government that's over elections to change election law. But that's the stipulations that's put in by the state legislature for referendums. That's not unique in Spanish Fork. The number's unique because we have different population than other cities. But again, to the public, there's not anything not transparent about this process. And all the information's there. If you want to look, if you don't want to look, you don't have to either. But if you want to look and you ask the questions, you can find answer to the questions there. If you can't find your answer to the question, text me, email, call.
Text that box.
Text the box. It's.
Don't text the mayor all the time, just text that box.
Hit the box. If you text me, I'm going to text them anyway, so you can bypass one more text if you'd like. But yes, all that information's there. Speaking of information, and Tara reminded me of what's coming up next, that she's going to talk about our elections. It's already been said, we are in election season, not city elections this year. There will be an appointed position that we'll talk about in December with Councilman Gordon leaving our ranks to the county level. So, there will be an appointment here in our city this year. But again, ballots in the mail, it couldn't be easier to vote, to exercise your constitutional rights. I would call it your constitutional duty to get informed, do your research, and vote. I've seen a lot of people, as I've been in and out of the mayor's office here, bringing that in to ask Tara where to drop it off, right? But the ballot drop box is over by our Senior Center while we're under construction here with the library. So, it's just down the road from us here. I'm sure she'll talk about it. But such an important part of our government and our freedoms that we enjoy in America is vote. If you have issue, it's a political process, and put your name or your candidate in the race and get the votes to shape our future. And I'd just encourage everybody to do that, which I'm sure our city recorder is going to do as well. That's all. That's all I have. Anything else before we hand it off to 101? Okay.
All right. Perfect. So, great start, right? I'm excited to talk about the elections. I hope to give you some new information that you didn't know about. Security is a big issue for people this year and in the last coming years. So I have a lot of security things on here that I think you'll be surprised and most people don't know. And they'll be excited to see that there is a lot of security measures and a lot of things that they don't need to worry about. So first, we are in partnership with Utah County. Like Mayor said, we are not in a city election or a local election. And so it's Utah County and above is what you're going to vote on. And we partner with them, and so they are going to be running our elections this year. You're welcome to call us as well. This is kind of fun. This year, we have, instead of "I voted" sticker, they have chosen to do this one here. And normally, it won't have any things under it. It says, "I voted because," and you're supposed to fill that in yourself. So I went around and I, this building, and I asked people why they would vote and what were the reasons they voted. And so I just put some of those on here, just kind of fun to see. And so that you can get some ideas if you didn't have one. When you go to vote, you can put on your sticker why you voted. Some of them are kind of funny. Some of them are kind of patriotic. I think that's my favorite right there, so I can't complain. And then, this is the last one that we saw. It's a true path to change. So it's very important. Every year, I get this question. When it's mail-in ballot, how do I get a sticker saying "I voted"? It's right there on your instructions for your ballot. So don't throw that away. Take that off. If you do happen to throw it away, come to the office and we'll give you "I voted" sticker. So, anyway, since we're in partnership with Utah County, I just want to make you aware of this site. It gives so much great information. You have voters that have when, why, and where. We'll give you all the information. This is a great one. This is one of those security measures, ballot tracks. They actually track your ballot. We're going to talk a little bit more about that and the security measures. Election results. By November 22nd, by 8:00 PM, they said they will have some results on there. Just know that they won't be the end results. They're preliminary results as they wait for overseas ballots, as they wait for maybe ballots that didn't have a signature or need to be verified. So the, the end result will be November 22nd is when we'll get those final. But every time they update those numbers, you'll be able to see them on this website. Then if you're a voter with disabilities, maybe can't make it to the voting center or whatever it may be, they have some other options for you as well. And then if you haven't had time to find out who the candidates are, this is a great place to go and learn about them as well before you vote, which is always a good thing. So the one I want to talk about is this ballot tracks. I subscribe to it, and they sent me this email. This was back on, in October. And they told me that my ballot was on the way, told me when I should expect it. And then if I didn't get it, who I could call, where I could email. This is a great way to track your ballot. They're going to tell you when you vote, where it's at, when it gets counted. So this is a great way for you. Some residents are concerned that they're, they just don't know if theirs got counted, right? Or that it made it to where it was going. So this is a great way. I also subscribe to vote.org. It sends me all kinds of good election things. Like right there, it says, "Find the polling place, make a plan." And it tells me all the polling places that I can go to, to vote. So the next one, this is very important. This is one of those security measures. And to vote in Utah, you have to have an ID. So you can have a primary ID on the right, or the left side, and then on the right side. If for some reason you're, you've moved or whatever, and you don't have that primary ID, you can do two forms of secondary ID. They just need to prove your residence, and they need to prove your name. And you can see those there. And those are on the website as well. So this is one of those security measures. They have a unique serial number for each person. So if that ballot comes through, it can't come through again because that serial number will be caught, if that makes sense. So you can't just photocopy a whole bunch of these, send them in, and vote for the person you want to 12 times. They will catch that. One of the other things is this signature. That's another security measure. Some people forget to sign, right? We're human. Sometimes we forget. But also, sometimes it doesn't match our signature. So they're going to send you a ballot cure letter, and they're going to tell you exactly what to do if for some reason your signature wasn't there or it doesn't match what they have on record. They actually match your signature to five different signatures that they have on record for you. Five different times you've signed documents. And then if for some reason it doesn't match, then they'll send it over to the election judges, and you'll get this letter. So this has to be turned in before the canvas, before November 22nd. So they have to receive it by November 21st. This is really cool. I don't know if you guys know the, the reason why there's a hole in your envelope. It is so you can see that your ballot is actually in the envelope. It's so sad for them to see an envelope come through with no ballot, right? Somebody wanted to vote but didn't necessarily get that ballot in. It also has a second purpose. They use it, back in the day, they used to have like 60 people who would actually take those ballots out by hand, and then they would process them that way. Now it goes through a machine. So to make sure that they get every ballot, they put this zip tie through it to make sure it doesn't get caught on anything, that all those ballots. And this is how they store them as well. So for 22 months, they stay exactly like this, and nobody touches them. All right. So another security measure, per state code, is that every ballot box has to have a camera. It may not look exactly like this one, but it has to have 24/7 footage on it at all times. So I had a resident ask me about ballot stuffing. I was able to say this camera would help with that. If there was anything nefarious going on, they would be able to, to see that. So this is Josh at the Utah County site. This is where they process your ballots. I went on a ballot tour. It was very insightful. Anybody can go. It's open to the public. So here is Josh. I don't think you knew this, but they actually weigh your ballot to make sure it has the proper requirements. So if you spilled coffee on your ballot, it's going to kick it off because it is not the right weight. And then they will have to double-check it with other things. If sometimes an envelope gets destroyed and two spouses put one, two ballots in one envelope, it will kick it out because it's not the right weight. So this is another security measure that they do to make sure that someone doesn't just take the sample ballot or take their ballot, run a whole bunch of copies off, and vote a whole bunch of times. Plus, that serial number would catch it. So they have a lot of things that would keep fraud from happening, right? So one of the cool things, I don't know if you see that line on the bottom, you actually can go and be a watcher. A watcher is somebody who signs up beforehand, and you actually can stand behind that line and watch the whole process, the whole election night. Now, there is some things, like they can only have four at one machine. You can't interfere with the process. You can't say anything. You can't, they have you go through training. You can't disclose certain things, right? And so, but if that's something that you want to do, you're welcome to go and watch all night and see how the ballots are processed. So I just wanted to point out, there's Spanish Fork on the back wall. That's just kind of fun. But this is cool. You know how you have the two-man rule for the nuclear codes? Where two people have to turn it at the same time? Same thing here.
I know.
Same thing here. They, the server is not hooked to the internet, so nobody can hack it. It's in a box, and it has to have those two keys, two people at the same time, turning that box to open that box. Another security measure. And then just to even get in the ballot processing area, you have to have three separate people. One has a key, one has a key card, and one disables the alarm to make sure that nobody gets in there without permission or authorization. And then I just wanted to point out the correct way to correct your ballot. Every year, somebody votes, and then they call me and say, oh no, I wanted to vote a different way, or I heard some information, so I want to vote differently. This is the correct way that you're going to change that ballot. You're going to cross out the one that you had selected, and then you're going to circle the one that you now want. Any other markings, we'll pull that ballot out, and the judges will have to determine what they think you indicated. And so just make it clear for them. Cross it out and circle it. So early voting starts tomorrow. So it's the second, the third, the fourth, and Monday. So it skips the weekend. Just be aware, you can only vote at the Provo office, the Utah County office, during this early voting. Obviously, you can send it in the mail. But if you send it in the mail, make sure it's postmarked by November 7th. November 8th is the election, but if you're mailing it, you have to do it by November 7th. Or you can drop it in one of the ballot boxes in all of Utah County. Ours is at the Senior Center. I'm just going to kind of show you where that is. You're going to see this sign that says "drop boxes." And then you're going to pull into the parking lot. It's going to be on your driver's side. Just make sure that you hit the ballot box and not the Spanish Fork Utility Bills Only box. If it ends up in the utility bills, we call the election office, and they come and verify some things. So just be aware, hit the right box. And then the day of the election, we have a vote center down at the Senior Center where you can go vote in person. And that's open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM that night. Even if you don't have a ballot, or you, your ballot was ruined or whatever it may be, you can still show up and do a provisional ballot. They'll require some ID and so forth. And then they'll have to double-check some things before they count that ballot, but you still can go vote. And then last, I love this quote. It was Archon Funk, and this is why he said he voted. He said, "I think democracy is the best system of government that we've invented so far. Democracy requires everyone to participate. If you don't participate, it's not, it's not democracy. It's someone else'socracy." So that's just another good indication, right? Go out and vote. So do you have any questions for me?
I've got one for you.
Yeah.
Do you know, do they wait until election day before they start opening envelopes and counting?
Yes.
Do they?
They want to have all those protections in place? Yeah.
Tara, I don't have a question, but that was thoroughly entertaining.
Oh, good, good. That's, I was trying to make elections entertaining. For sure.
I learned a lot about security.
Yeah, great job.
I've never questioned it, but boy, I feel really confident. So thank you.
Yeah, and we can be confident.
That's great.
My 11-year-old Stella is up at Diamond Fork Junior High. Mr. Buck is a good school teacher because he stands up in front of the class and he says, "All right, you see this ballot? See this Brandon Gordon guy? I don't know him." And Stella raises her hand and says, "That's my dad." And he goes, "Okay, now I know him. What I'm teaching you kids is you've got to get to know the candidates."
For sure.
And I love that our teachers are teaching the children proper ways of voting. So it was great to hear that story when she came home from school, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks for your enthusiasm. It's great.
I'd like to tell you through the process of, of watching Councilman Gordon go through the, getting the Republican nomination, because county races are partisan, local races aren't. But the Republican nomination, winning Republican convention, and then winning the, the general Republican primary vote, I was a little disheartened. And, and I know it's a national discussion about fair elections and free and fair elections and, and whatnot, but I was disheartened that people were concentrating on a Republican primary election and saying, well, are we sure this is the right thing? Are we sure the votes were counted? And I, I saw that office in, in the county go to great lengths to say, here's what we put in place in, in Utah County, and here's what we're doing. And I think it's just being more transparent. I think it says a lot about, I've, I've won elections, I've lost elections. I think it says more about people when they lose an election than when they win an election. And so my, again, I can't say it enough, regardless of what the vote happens and how many tallies and it counts up to whatever, it's still important to vote. Whatever side, whatever side you were educated on and, and, and vote on, vote. Because it is someone else'socracy. I like that, if you, if you don't vote. So, thank you.
Well, that's great because, right, there are so many more security measures that I couldn't tell you about. But go to that ballot tour, and it's, it's a fabulous tour, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. Thanks.
Thanks, Tara.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay. That takes us from item six to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. We're to our public hearing, part of the agenda. Item 8A, disposition of property at 361 North, 300 West. Tyler Jacobson.
So you'll notice there's actually a couple of other items after this that will pertain to it, but, let's see, let me grab. So anytime the city disposes of property that they own, we are required to hold a public hearing. And 14 days prior to the public hearing, we're required to post on the property and also on the public notice website that the property's going to be sold. And so this hearing comes after those 14 days. And the property that we're looking to dispose of is a home at 361 North, 300 West. The purpose of purchasing this home originally was to make it possible to put a roundabout here. You may wonder why we would buy this house and not this house. In just a minute, I don't want to take you around in a roundabout way, but it may just have to happen here. So anyways, we'll talk more about this house here in just a minute. But this is just the, the public hearing portion of, of this whole process.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into public hearing for this item. Roll call, vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item 8A, disposition of property. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon. Roll call, vote. Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
We're out of public hearing. Any other discussion up here? Questions for Tyler or anybody on staff? I think we've talked about this a little bit in, in meetings before about this. And it goes a little bit along the lines of Main Street that's been discussed, too. This is, this is another corridor in Spanish Fork that, that moves north and south. And so this is some planning going into, to maybe improving Main Street and, and the efforts there. So long-range planning here, but this is what, this is part of the puzzle piece that gets a roundabout here and gets traffic flowing better on Third West.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the disposition of, of property, 361 North, 300 West.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. Roll call, vote. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
That's approved. Takes us to 9A of new business, 389 North, 300 West, real estate purchase contract and leaseback agreement.
Okay, so this will hopefully all make sense now. We're grateful to have actually the homeowners of the, the home at 389 North, 300 West, the Hudson's with us tonight. So Mayor hit the nail on the head as far as the reason why we are purchasing this home[1696.79] here, and that is to make it easier to commute north and south here in the city. So, in order to make this work, I'll try to simplify this as much as possible, but we, the Hudson's had recently remodeled their home here at 389 North, and purposefully moved here. This is probably more information than you need, but it'll make a little bit more sense, I think, to the public as to why we did it this way. They have family that lives next door. They were purposeful in buying this home so that they could live close to family, and it just so happened that the home next door to them went up for sale a few months ago, and so, the city bought that with the intent of hopefully selling that to the Hudson's so that they could purchase this home and still continue to live close to where they wanted to be in Spanish Fork. So, the city, what you'll see before you today is a contract proposing that we purchase this property from the Hudson's so that we can put a roundabout in here, and then also so that we can sell this other home to them, so that they can still live next door. And one thing that's, I think is worth pointing out, throughout this process, our engineering team and others have worked really hard to ensure that we didn't have to purchase property from multiple homeowners, and so, this made the most sense as they diagrammed where the roundabout could go, to just buy one, one home and not have to go through this, a similar process with some of these other landowners. So, it's kinda like all the stars aligned in this, and the Hudson's have been great to work with, and we're grateful for their patience through this process, too. You'll also see, one other thing that I think is worth mentioning, is there's a leaseback agreement on this proposal, which would allow the Hudson's to lease back their home for a period of, period of time until early next year, when they can move into this other home as they do some renovations on that. Any questions?
Any questions for Tyler on this?
All right.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
If not, if there's no questions, no questions from the Hudson's, maybe? Looks like, all right, okay. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the 389 North, 300 West, real estate purchase contract and leaseback agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item 9A is approved, takes us to Item 9B. I don't know that there needs to be...
Oh, sorry, this is the second part.
This is the second part of that, of that graph that you saw of selling that, the property that we're selling.
I move to approve the 361 North, 300 West, real estate sales contract and financing agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call, vote. Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
That passes. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thanks for your patience, by the way. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks again. Item 9C is Utah County Jail Security Fence and Wall Height Approval Request.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is really pretty straightforward. For any fences to be permitted in the city that are taller than six feet, you, as the council, have to approve them. So, Nick will pull up an image for us here in just a second. That will show where at the Utah County Security Center, they would like you to approve fences that would be eight feet tall instead of six. That second image that we talked about, Nick, if you can throw that up. This shows exactly what the council, excuse me, the county, and incidentally, we're joined by a couple of our colleagues from the county, Mr. Nielsen and Mr. Turner.
Tanner.
We'll go with Turner.
Make him get it right. Who?
Mr. Turner, right? In some minutes that we have before you, it's Turner, so. Mr. Tanner, yes, Glenn Tanner, very happy to have Glenn Tanner with us tonight. The line work that you see here kinda throughout, I don't have a pointer, but I think it does, to some extent, kinda pop there, and we appreciate Glenn Tanner for putting that together for us. That's what the county would like you to permit at a height of eight feet instead of six feet. We've had quite a bit of conversation about this over the years, in terms of what would be appropriate maybe to have around this facility and that type of a thing. We've even gone back and looked at conversations that were had decades ago about this. From my perspective, I really appreciate that they're, they're being, in my view, fairly judicious about where they have fencing on the premise, or where they would like to have fencing like this. And with maybe the next image, Nick, you can see just examples of the type of fencing that they'd like to install. They call it rod iron fence, on the other image that we were just looking at. In my opinion, this particular kind of fencing, it's kinda interesting. It just tends to fade into the landscape. You really don't see it, at least from much of a distance and that kind of a thing. Not really obtrusive visually or anything like that. So, this comes to you tonight with a recommendation from the Development Review Committee, that it be approved. And there are some other materials, I think, that we've included with the staff report, a little bit more detail and that type of a thing, but this is really what simply the county's requesting that you approve tonight.
Can you go back, one, to the show? So, this is, I wouldn't say isolating, but also the 911 Center. So, that you just can't get into that center, the whole, that's whole, all the way around? I didn't see the green light. But does it come up on that side, then?
Yeah, it would circumnavigate the whole property, and in fact, I think the pictures of the rod iron fence example is from the 911's parking lot, right?
Okay.
So, they actually have this around their parking lot as well.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be closed, like the gates, and maybe where you're headed with this, this isn't gonna be closed all the time.
Right.
Maybe even hardly ever, right, in terms of vehicular access?
Okay.
Yeah. There is one other component. You jogged my memory, an eight-foot-tall masonry wall. It kinda fades a little bit more on this image here, but on the western side of the site.
So, that's a masonry wall?
That would be a masonry wall. We have an image that's an example of that as well. The style of the wall and probably the color of staining and things like that would match what we've adopted in our standards. So, this would be the same kinda wall you might see around an industrial storage yard in this part of the community, or something like that.
Thank you.
Not, not close to Main Street, more back off on the western side.
And that one's gonna be eight foot as well.
In certain areas, eight feet as well, yes. Good.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this one, or the county staff that's here?
I think we should have Richard come up for 10, 15 minutes.
I think, I think it's appropriate to invite Richard to come up.
Yes.
Make him do a report on something, probably, let's have him do a report on PI, maybe a project that he was working on when he worked here.
There you go. I like it. I like it. We could go back in time if you'd like, Richard. Yeah.
So, we actually, with this request, went back and reviewed a bunch of different historical documents and things. There were some narratives that we had heard through time that, that the county and the city had an agreement that thou shalt never have a fence, and we didn't wanna maybe violate something. We couldn't find anything that actually said that. We'd heard that through some conversations, but we didn't, we couldn't find that. So, as we reviewed this, felt like trying to measure, what is the need and the request today? Not measuring it by some 1990-whatever standard, but by a 2020 standard of what is it that they're looking for? And I think Glenn or Richard could maybe get up and share with you specifically what they're looking for, from the county's perspective. But this really isn't meant to be a security razor-wire fence, and I think that was the issue that they were talking about in the 90s, that we didn't want that on Main Street. And so, I think they've done a really good job of finding the balance of, they really just wanna have some delineation between where the public spaces are, and they're actually looking to keep you out, because they wanna keep that.
Who did you point to?
I pointed to...
The collective of you?
Nobody, and everybody at the same time.
It felt like you were pointing to Mike, but...
No, nobody.
Not as much as escape prevention from the jail, but people coming in, right?
I got in about a week and a half ago, on a tour.
Oh. You should not let that trail right there.
Tell us more.
She spent one night. Just a quick one.
Just a quick tour. My son is a deputy sheriff there, and so, he said, "There's a time at 11:00 p.m., so come on down." So, we went down and toured. Very interesting, and it sounds like you offer that to everybody, not just me, so people can schedule that.
It's very inspiring.
Yeah, it really is. You guys do a good job. Yeah.
Appreciate the partnership that the city has with the county at that facility. When Seth, when we started looking at this and started looking at minutes of fencing discussion back, now, how many years has this been? 30? 30 years? We started looking at some of those minutes, and you wanna talk about public clamor? You wanna talk about some people concerned about the county putting their jail in, you know, in their, in their city? There's a lot of strong opinions on both sides of that, and some of the, and full disclosure, this part of this, I don't think all of it, but a big part of it was my grandpa Gold's farm down there, and so, there was a lot of things said to him about selling out to the county, and now, even in the minutes of a meeting, it was discussed that said, the, why would you put it in, why would you put the county jail in Spanish Fork? We hardly have any people from Spanish Fork that are in the county jail. And the county sheriff at the time had this statistics right at that meeting, and we were kinda up there in percentage of, of people in the county jail.
I think those are parts of the minutes we tend to wanna forget.
Yeah, we would forget those minutes, but it was an education of what, you know, what, and in the end, what's this created, being in our community, except for, I think we're one of the safest communities around. There's a lotta sheriffs, deputies, working there that are driving around, eating lunch in Spanish Fork, and so, it's, I think it's only made us safer, not less safe. So, thank you for your partnership there, and this looks like a good, another good step in improving the facility, so. Anything else?
Motion?
I move to approve the proposed Utah County Fence Height Approval.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. So, roll call, vote. Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
That passes. Takes us to Item 9D, GWC 320 Annexation Acceptance.
Good, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is, I would say, both routine and a little bit unique. You've reviewed quite a few proposals for annexations that have been at this stage in recent years, where we are simply asking the council to accept an annexation proposal for further study. If you choose to do that, it doesn't obligate you, at the end of a process, to actually approve the annexation. You completely retain the discretion to make that decision down the road, and that's the request tonight, to accept this for further study. What makes this unique is that this property's outside of the city's current annexation policy plan, or sometimes we call it annexation declaration, which means that the process that this would go through would have another pretty big step to it, before it could be back on a council agenda at some point in the future, for you to consider whether or not you'd like to approve the annexation at that point in time. That process basically would involve us preparing a prospective amendment of the city's annexation policy plan that likewise would, would get to you after going to the Planning Commission. I believe there are public hearings on that with both the Planning Commission and the City Council, but honestly, that's something that we haven't done here in a really, really long time, where that's been amended, so we'll have to brush up on exactly what the required process would be to go through that process, and again, get that to where you could conceivably amend the policy and therefore annex this property. Right now, the subject property and others in the vicinity, incidentally, we're talking about property that's kinda right at the end of the runway of the airport, they're on the north side of the state highway. Right now, our annexation policy does not include any land north of the state highway there. Subject properties indicated, they're in yellow, and Springville's annexation policy does not only include the subject property, but several other properties going to the west, and even some that are south of the state route. So, already today, we have some overlap with the two policy plans that each of the two cities have there in the area. Jared Morgan with GWC is here with us tonight. I know that he's spent a considerable amount of time over the course of the past year working with Springville. We've talked about the prospect of this property being annexed into Spanish Fork. Given other investments that GWC has made in the immediate area on the Spanish Fork side of kinda the annexation plans where they've been historically, and I'm gonna really simplify things and just put it in my own words, Mr. Morgan and his company, I think, have really done a good job of being diligent about exploring options with Springville, and analyzing at Springville's request largely, whether or not it would make sense to have this property perhaps annexed into Springville. And we have received pretty clear direction from Springville that they are not anticipating annexing this property at this point in time, and that they would not object to the property being annexed into Spanish Fork. That was a big deal for us, at least as staff, as we wanted to be respectful of Springville's annexation policy and their plans, but getting to the point that Mr. Morgan has kinda gotten this discussion to now, and again, I'll just speak for myself, I think it's entirely appropriate for ultimately you to make a decision as the councilist, whether or not you wanna annex it into Spanish Fork. So, if you accept this annexation for further study tonight, again, it would put a few different things into motion, really to evaluate whether or not ultimately you think it makes sense to have the property annexed into Spanish Fork. Given that one pretty unique and yet significant aspect of it not being in your policy today, Seth and I talked about this earlier in the week, I don't know if there are any particular things that you would want us to review or to look at, as we look at potentially changing where the future boundary of Spanish Fork could be in the area? If there are things maybe that you wanna share with us in upcoming weeks? We don't expect that the process will probably take place at breakneck speed, will be deliberate and methodical as we look at the questions that have already referenced, and would love any input that you'd care to share, any particular things that you'd like us to pay attention to as we go through that process.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this one? The applicant's here, too, if you have any questions for the applicant.
This is, so this is just like we've done before, that you'll study this and look at this? How and can we provide facilities to it?
That's a big part of it, and the folks at GWC, they've already done a lot of that legwork relative to this property. I think the bigger question that this just happens to raise, if you, as the council, would consider annexing this property, then, you know, where does it make sense ultimately for that, that boundary to end up? It potentially could be just with this property. We think it's prudent now probably to look at a little bit bigger scale, but that wouldn't be required. There'd be a lot of different approaches, and the council would have a lot of options, but certainly providing services is a big deal. Utility service, that's probably paramount in my mind, is what we need to figure out.
This item's different than Item E, even though right after this, right?
Separate annexation.
Different location.
Same applicant.
Perfect. I'll make a motion that we accept GWC 320 Annexation Request for Further Study.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, if not, roll call, vote. Councilman Argyle?
No.
Councilman Euler?
No.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Councilman Gordon?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you. Anybody wanna talk about nos? Or yeses, if you want?
I will just say that from the get-go, when they mentioned that we might wanna go across this, and I understand that we have a huge investment in this corner, but I think that 400 South Road needs to remain Spanish Fork's boundary, and it's not to extend, and that's for other reasons, because I know there's, that lake, you're getting close to the lake, that brings up a lot of other different issues than we've had down there. I know you can resolve water issues and stuff like that, but I've watched this land over the years go from hundreds of acres to 10 acres, as that lake comes and goes, and we'd like that lake to go back up someday.
Tara, can you change mine to a yes? The questions that I have won't be answered until we do the study, so I'm fine with the study taking place and then making the decision as to whether or not we annex.
Okay. Is that okay, Tara? Do we need to redo it? Thank you, Councilman Euler. Thank you, Councilman Argyle. That takes us to Item E, Resolution Indicating Intent to Annex the GWC Annexation Separate Property Than...
Mayor, before we jump to that, I just wanna express gratitude for that opinion. This is something that we, as staff, think needs to be studied heavily, of course, and
And so I, knowing those concerns is good for us to know as well. We won't have all the answers today. We don't have all the answers today, and so this gives us the opportunity to study it. But we'll get, we really do also need a lot of the concerns that you have. So if there are some, we can, we can work on those in work sessions or in other things like that to get, get to the end of the road to see if it's, do we want to go there or not?
And for the public, there will be public hearing.
Yeah, there are, I think with annexations, there's a public hearing and a planning commission.
Just with the city council, the annexation, but I think with the menu of the plan, the policy plan.
Yeah, there's.
You gotta have basically two public hearings if we amend it, yeah.
I'm interested to see what we're looking at for a future growth boundary. I think that would be my, not that it's a concern, but that was what was going through my head when I was looking at the map. So, because that, that's a weird map now. Not that you shouldn't approve anything on being a weird map, but. We need to look at some things, so.
Does it include more of that, just that? Yeah. There's two decisions to be made, not just one.
Yeah, yeah, makes the map a little unique. May, council.
Vaughn Pikel.
Yeah, this next annexation is, is different from that one in that instead of accepting it for further study, this, this resolution would indicate that you are planning to annex it unless you receive enough protests from the property owners. Let me show you where it is located. It's just kitty corner from that, that large one there. It's, it's right here. And the reason why you can do this by a resolution is because it's less than 50 acres. It's a small one. It's part of an existing peninsula of unincorporated county. And so the process would be if you adopt the resolution indicating your intent, we then schedule a public hearing and then if enough protests are received by people rep- owning more than half of the private property value and half of the private property area, then you can't annex it at that point. But if so long as not, not that many protests are received, then you can.
Is there a number or is it just?
It's half of the value and half of the area, according to the county records. That's what we go by.
And it's just those people in that square that could protest?
Just, yes, just right here.
How many owners are there?
I think four.
Okay, so two of them say no.
Yeah, so four owners.
But it has to be based on area, not numerosity, but if they own over half the area.
Gotcha.
And I think GWC and another property owner own more than half, so it's unlikely.
Okay. Just trying to get the process in my head.
Yep. So it's, it's this area here.
Okay, so Vaughn, what happened to this 100%?
This is.
Because this is less than 50 acres, right?
Right. Because it's less than 50 acres, it, the rules that accompany annexing by petition don't apply. It's, this is a special process. We can do it by resolution and then later in ordinance unless we get objections from 50% area and 50% value.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Okay.
Thank you, Vaughn. If there's no further questions on this, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution indicating intent to annex property known as the GWC annexation.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
No.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
That passes. Chad, anything you want? Councilman Argyle, anything you want on that one?
Just have a little bit of concerns about a particular property owner there that's made his intentions clear.
Okay. Thank you. Takes us to item F, Spanish Fork, Mapleton wastewater reclamation facility, construction administration service.
Okay, so we're excited to get going on this large wastewater treatment plant construction. It's a very intricate design, which is very modern, state of the art type design. And this is for the engineering and construction management to take us through this, this three-year process to, to get it built and tested and make sure that, that it runs properly. We went through a, a pretty extensive selection process to choose our engineering team of JUB and StanTech. They've been an outstanding design team so far on the project and, and getting all the permitting and, and to really future-proof a, a design that no matter what the state's regulations come in at, we, we'll be able to respond and be able to meet those limits. And, and so we've been very happy with them through the design phase. And this kind of takes them into the construction management phase of the project. Any questions about?
Can it take sewer yet?
What's that?
Can it take sewer yet?
Careful.
Dooley nodded Keith.
This is inspection, testing, all of that services, all those services.
Yeah.
What's the length of time? Is it, oh, 32 months.
Three year.
So we have a contingency in there in case it goes 36 months. We have kind of a, a range when we think it'll be done. A lot of it's depending on material, when they can come in. And, and, and so we're hopeful that it's closer to the 32 months, but.
Is Provo online yet?
I don't think so.
It's not? Close, okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, why don't we, we, we have, Keith here is our project manager for the project. And he, he comes to us as an elective official in Santaquin. He was there when Santaquin built a very similar wastewater treatment plant, which he was heavily involved with. And so comes with some kind of special experience on that and connections to, he can talk to the guys that he knows really closely in Santaquin and say, hey, does this work? Does that work? Or what would you do different? And so Keith brings a lot of experience in the construction industry as well as kind of a connection to sewer treatment plants, which we're really happy about. And, and maybe I'll have you come and talk a little bit about this.
And I have been through a few referendums and they're not fun.
Has Santaquin dealt with any growth recently?
No. None. It's so crazy over there. It's crazier than here, I think, percentage wise.
Yeah, percentage wise.
Yeah. Just want to introduce you really quick. We have Jim Goodley here. He's with JUB. They are lead engineers and they're teamed up with StanTech. We have Clint Rogers back here. StanTech is more into the, to the process of making, making the bad stuff go to good. That's what I guess we'll say. So we've been really impressed with their design. It's been, you know, we went through the CMGC and, or the GMP and it's been pretty smooth. They've got good drawings and they're just wonderful to work with. And I think we, we will need them for this management part of it. I'm down there. I don't know if Chris mentioned, but this contract is a not to exceed. So it's not a lump sum. We're going to watch it. It could come in less. We're hoping, right guys? So anyway, we're looking forward to working with them and getting this project done, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Keith. I know you've been along. We appreciate you.
Yes, I do. Wait, come back, Keith.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. It's my fault. I didn't stand.
I'm back. Should've looked at you.
And I was reading. So are, are you housing these folks onsite? Are they showing up every morning?
They come as needed. We have progress meetings every Tuesday morning. You're welcome to come down. They're in our, we have an annex now there, a little office trailer that I'm in with a conference room. But Jim comes, people from StanTech, and we, all their construction. All of us are there as a team and we decide what, what is needed for the next week. We do three-week look aheads, so they're not always there. They're there when we need them, but they are there every Tuesday, so.
It looks like Jim is almost full-time for 32 months, 36 months. Is that?
Well, he's the lead engineer. There is a ton of submittals on this thing and that's kind of what his forte is, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Looks like you moved a little dirt around right before snow came in and filled it up with a little bit of water.
Yeah, a lot of it, as, as, as construction ramps up quite a bit, then we'll see a lot more inspection inspectors and engineers out on site as we get going on.
Perfect. Thank you, Chris. Anything from our sewer councilman?
No, and Chad also sat in on this.
Sat on all meetings.
The reviews.
Great, great. If there's no other questions for Chris on this, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Spanish Fork and Mapleton wastewater reclamation facility, construction administration service.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Passes. Takes us to item G, the other side of water, Malcolm Springs.
Yes, so we've been heavily involved with replacing a 2 million and a 1 million gallon tank that have eroded over time and, and are near the end of their useful life. Near the mouth of the canyon, we've removed the smaller of the two, the 1 million gallon tank with a CMGC contract. When that removal was completed, we started getting quotes for concrete to build the tanks. And at that time, there was a huge concrete shortage. And with that shortage, we elected to, to put this project off a year and to wait for the concrete plants to, to get back to producing and, and and also to get our budget to catch up with the cost of concrete that's in, in high demand. And so we've now have enough budget and we were able to get a price for the construction of this tank, which is a, a pre-stress tank. It's, it's actually a fairly, a complex tank where they, they bring in cables and they actually put the concrete under stress compression around it so that it can not only hold the water, but, but hold the water in, in, in say a situation like an earthquake. There, there are a couple of fault lines that kind of come near to where this tank is. And so we're concerned about that. It's actually a very similar design to what Springville is just constructing up on their bench, which is also near a fault line, which is the nature of tanks. You, you build them up on the bench, that's where the fault lines are. And so there's only a few contractors in, in the state that can really build this. And so as we got these prices in, when the CMGC contractor bid it out and, and brought these prices in, one thing that, that is in our contract is we can look at just bidding it straight up. And so we had our engineers look at that and evaluate based on a couple of similar tanks that have bid recently in, in the state of Utah. And in comparing notes from that, the feeling was we, we would probably get worse pricing and probably have to delay it again. And because of how busy the other contractors were and, and realized we were actually in a good position now where we have a CMGC contractor on, on a contract right now, willing to build it right now and, and get it done. And so these, these prices are, are actually lower than what is being bid right now. And it's just, it's kind of an expensive time to build tanks, but we really need these tanks, so. And, and we're not sure that that'll come down that much in the future. So our recommendation and the recommendation of the engineers is to award this guaranteed maximum price of $7.3 million.
Chris?
Yeah.
After, and, and this is, I don't know, this is a question, once we build a tank like that, I know that tank that was there probably was 40 some years old, was it not? The 2 million we tore down?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe a little older than that.
A little more than that. Is there a, a, some kind of a guarantee that this will last? Do they do that? Or they design that as such that it'll last 20, 30, 40 years?
Yeah.
Because we, I mean, I don't want to build another one in 10 years. I just.
Yeah, no, we, we've built a few tanks in the last 20 years.
Right.
And they're holding up great. These, these tanks have held up fine, but usually designed to a 40, 50-year life.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions for Chris on this? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Malcolm Springs 5 MG water tank, phase two, guaranteed maximum price.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Argyle. Roll call vote, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
That's approved. Takes us to item 10.
I move to go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation, land use, and discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argyle to go into closed session for those items. Roll call vote, Councilman Gordon.
Yes.
Councilman Argyle.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
We're adjourned into closed session. Thank you all for coming.
Can I make a, like a caveat to that, yes?
Yes.